You're not gonna be here.
I was not? Oh, okay.
Just call me.
Good chair, embarrassed enough?
Let me know. Good evening. Welcome to Board Selectment Meeting of June twenty-third. It's now seven oh three and I declare this meeting open. Please join me in the Fudge of meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Announcements. The first announcement I have here is the good news. We are pleased to announce that Millville Senior Center Transportation Ban arrived today. The vehicle is owned by the town via a grant funded eighty percent by the state. The vehicle will be registered and insured this week and we hope that transportation services to our areas will commence in the very near future. We thank all our seniors for their patience and understanding while the Council on Aging work diligently to resume van service in Millville. And also express our sincere appreciation to the Council on Aging Chairperson Pat Leesha and the members of the Council on Aging as well as Chief Landry and his clerk Trish for their perseverance and assistance with filing the grant paperwork. Please note that the Senior Center will be closed on Wednesday for the summers, for the summer beginning July first. A reminder, there's a special town meeting next Monday, June thirtieth at six thirty at the Millville Island Elementary School to address only one financial article in connection with the additional requested school funding. A quorum of forty is required to act on this item. Please show up. The Finance Committee will hold a public hearing in conjunction with the Special Town Meeting warrant this Wednesday, June twenty-fifth at seven P M. Here at the Town Hall, please attend this public hearing with any questions. The Special Town Meeting warrant is available online at millville.org and hard copies are available at the Town Hall. A reminder to motorists, schools will be closed soon for the summer. Please take extra caution for children outside on the roadways. Reminder to town departments, with the closure of fiscal twenty-fourteen quickly approaching, please make every effort to submit payments for all FY fourteen invoices to the town account. Additionally, closely review your current budget line items for any shortages and contact Executive Secretary with any questions. The Board of Selectment extends best wishes for a happy and safe July fourth holiday and summer all day. With that, we'll move to the approval of minutes.
I have a question before I make a motion. On the June ninth meeting, it said there was only one, the only applicant for the interim, I'm sorry, for the building inspector when actually there was two in our packet. We had one for Mr. Barber that was in there. Correct?
It was for the local. He applied for the local inspector position, not building commissioner.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June ninth.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Barrett isn't here and only three attended this meeting, so I would suggest tabling this.
We'll table it until our next meeting. The minutes of June ninth. I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of June ninth, seven P M.
I'll second that.
Any questions? Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes of June twelfth at seven thirty.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chairman, we would be looking to take that as well.
We're at...
And I do have one warrant this evening. This is for the payroll deductions for the pay period ending June sixteenth, two thousand fourteen. The amount is four thousand four hundred five dollars and seventeen cents.
Motion to sign the warrant.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Report town officials. Mr. Clement. We have Ms. Carroll for report on the Historical Commission.
Takes me a little longer than, every time I come to visit you, it takes me a little longer to get here. But, yeah. And I want to thank you for having us. Response to our letter of April second. My name is Margaret. Caroline is chairman. Mr. Clement is the vice chairman. Emo Berthellet had planned to be with us. Gave us a statement we couldn't do. But we want to back the selectmen. We have to get my glasses. We have to change my glasses. We want to, because I know this is going to be sent, several letters to the, there you go, several letters to the chair. This has been a very, very busy time and we know that. But we don't want to let this go on much longer because we don't always meet in July and August. So we'd like to have this settled. No, I am settled. Get my glasses. The purpose of the meeting is, was to discuss the changes that were made in the first floor historical display and our letter to the Board of Selectmen and the response from Helen regarding that. I'm sure you all had those letters and have seen them. And in our letter, we asked one, were you aware of the major changes that had been made? And we asked you an opportunity to explain the plan to create those displays throughout the building. And then we wanted to learn how the decision was made to dismantle parts of the display. And we also, we have three requests to leave with you before we finish. The, I, we think really that we're here because I think there was a, there was a breakdown in communication. And we really would like to see that remedied, possibly tonight. We're all working for the same purpose. The Historical Commission is celebrating its twenty-fifth year in existence. And I represent all those, those people who spoke before, who served before us. Actually, Mary Gordon and I are charter members, so we, nobody came before us. Now, when, when the transition was made from the Town Hall to here, it was done with a real plan. It involved a school committee, it involved the town selectmen, the department heads. And we were asked by the school committee and the selectmen if we would serve as a liaison between both groups so that those articles that they felt might be of historical significance would not be lost in the mood. So we did that. And then we presented our plan. The first thing, you, there's a wonderful story that goes with the day when all of the officers were in this room. That was a, everybody had a dish. That was about it. But then, as we began sorting the things, we realized that we had to get someplace to put these displays. And the agreement was that we would put them on first floor. And then we would decide if we would move them. In the end, there was a decision not to move them because they felt having them in the business office, the business office was closed at nights when the meetings were being held, but might be more, at that time, there was more action in this part. So the first floor would house maps from the earliest one to the latest. And there would be two small pictures. And there's a wonderful story that goes with the two pictures. Then later, those two pictures had fallen from the wall. The frames were broken. And they were reframed and placed in the classroom. But the Historical Commission didn't know about that. It was done and it was done in the best of interest, I'm sure, of the town. And we certainly would have had them framed and we would have asked, especially the picture of the Chargers marching band at the Parade of Roses, we would have asked a special place that picture. And so this brings up a major question. When the Historical Commission has documents copied and framed, do we lose our ability to maintain them and to make recommendations about them or does that then go over to the town? We don't know that. That's a question we would like to have clarified if we could. So that's a good place to start when we speak of communications with the different municipal departments. The, there was a, there was a lot of thought that went into where the displays would be and what they would be. They are very limited. We limited ourselves only to the maps in this section and then that wonderful, the, that was nineteen eighty-eight. We got the picture in eighty-nine and we moved into this building in ninety-one. So that was fresh and new in the minds of everybody. And the town of Millville was so proud that our band had marched right down through the Parade of Roses. And that was the only exception that was made that was not historical in the deeper sense. So if you have any questions when we finish, we'd be glad to. But Lee, if you've got something that you want.
Yeah, I've only been on the Historical Commission for a couple of years and I gotta say the work they've done before is phenomenal. Some of these things I've been seeing. And probably shouldn't even be sitting here trying, you know, communications, a big, a big thing. If some of this stuff just can't be leaned on its side, stored away somewhere, it needs to be preserved. And the old, the thing I've been getting a lot of questions on, people I run into in town and had, like the old maps, eighteen thirty-one that was on the wall over here, they're like, what happened to that map? That was pretty interesting. They say, you know, all the old roads and all of that. And I think all Margaret's asking for is just better communication. If something's gonna be moved, you know, how should we place it and where should it be if it can't be on wall because of safety, safety reasons? I think that's all she's looking for. Because there's a lot we want to do. I don't know if you've seen the Minnesota Call on Sunday, now before and after pitches and we've talked at all the buildings. We'd love to do that. Stop doing that in Millville. Stop and see these people in these old houses and get some information on them. And hopefully they have some old pitches and start putting something together like that on PowerPoint. I think it would be great. But I think that's all Margaret's looking for right now, just better communication.
That material certainly is part of the culture and heritage of this, this town. It has a rich, for, for the second newest town. It is a real history. And I think it's important to display it. I agree with you both that we need to resolve the communication issue and see if we could develop a liaison to, you know, cock these things over and come up with another plan. I understand that there are a couple of factors here that, there are some conditions with the walls. We have to think about how we put them up on the walls. And the other thing is that, there's a good possibility that we're gonna need some work on this building. Building Committee is in the process of going through an existing condition study to see what needs to be done. And the state has come up with around eight hundred thousand dollars potential in borrowing to do work on this building. So I don't think we can do anything quickly, but...
Right. But somewhere within that plan, maybe we can.
Yeah. But see, that was part of the plan. We didn't just do it ourselves. We would know. Historical Commission was fairly know. We had built a file on information. We've gone to all kinds of workshops. The, as far as the pictures, they were out, they, they hung there for twenty, over twenty years. Everything we had there was there for over twenty years. The, the building inspector at the time, I think I know what it was, but there's no need to mention him by name. He approved where they would go, you know, the walls and the safety of the walls and all that. So, and things do change. I realize they do change. The only thing is what, that when, when they came down, we're not in the building every day and we didn't know it. And then they, so change was made. And that's, I, I agree. Just a question of the, whoever it's gonna be, the selectman, the executive secretary, whoever it's gonna be, would just sit with us and let us explain, or explain. The reason is, this is not, we're not objecting. We're just asking for some, some changes to the changes that was made. Now, I know one of the biggest maps that we have is in the business office, but you can't get to it. And you can't see it and you can't, you can't study it. Originally, as I said, there would, there would to be no, no, nothing that would stop people in the business offices, stop and look because that would interfere with the staff and their business. So that was off limits. We could post nothing and there's, and we understood that. As time went on, some other things began to be posted there. But again, as Lee said, it's a, it's just a question of change being brought about by new rules and regulations. For instance, upstairs, when we, when we did the upstairs, we had to have a divider. When you came off the elevator into that upper lobby, we had to have a divider because there was an open staircase on the other side. That open divider was, that divider is gone today. So whatever the change, whatever the state regulation that required it to be there, it was no longer in fact. So it was taken down. And, and we understand those changes, but it was just that we, we really wanted to be, we really wanted to know before the fact rather than after the fact. Like you talked about that A E D machine. The, the, the maps were there before the machine was put up. The time to contact us and say, you know, you're gonna have to move some of those maps, but it never was done. It was squeezed in right, right up close to, to the map. And we never, we didn't come to complain. We just didn't want to do it. And this is over a series of years now. So if we can, if we can create a line of communication tonight, then I would be happy. You would have to tell us how that's going to be accomplished and what's going to involve. But the three questions we have to leave with you tonight. Would you please allow the Historical Commission to continue the practice of seeking your approval on any plan or project that's part of our mission statement that has always been in place? And the mission statement is clear. It's in every town we pull up and it's, and displaying is part of it. We ask you not to change that. Please let that go on. And then if you could ask, adopt a new policy that the Historical Commission would be given adequate notice of any changes in existing plans, displays, projects, or efforts to preserve and display Millville's history. If we could be just told, though, there was painting going on. If we had known that, we would have taken those pictures down. And then we ask that the, we please approve the Historical Commission request that any information and correspondence regarding the agenda of the commission will be sent directly to the Board of Selectmen with copies to the Executive Secretary and any other involved parties. We want to maintain our direct con, direct contact with the Board of Selectmen, which has gone on for now for twenty-five years. It's a way of you knowing what, what we're doing. Now, I'm sure, we do that once a year anyway. But when something comes up during the year, we have already started on a display on our plans for the centennial celebration. We know exactly, well, we may have to add a number two, but we have, we have all of those components in place because we have, we have busy meetings when we meet once a month. We want you to know that that's going on and, and have your approval of it because we do represent the town of Millville. We don't just represent, represent five people on the commission. I always say five people and twenty-two others who served before. So that's the reason that we're asking those three things. If you would like me to send a copy in writing, I can do that. But do you have any questions you want to ask us?
Do any board members have comments or questions?
I have more of a comment. I was on board from ninety-six to two thousand two. And I know during that time, you know, it was what, five to ten years after we had established ourselves into this building. And I can remember it was common practice at that time when anything new went up that it did go through the Historical Society. Now, I don't remember things coming down because it was all new. So I know the Historical Commission at that time would come to us and say, we are putting up this display. We're removing this. We're changing this. We're redoing things. And with that, the board would then give approvals. So in my, my experience, that would be, I would figure that's the continued practice. But not everyone has the gift of longevity and knowledge of that practice. So I think we just need to re-institu, I personally don't have a problem with re-instituting that. And I don't, I don't think anything you're asking for is beyond reasonable. You know, just to be sure that, we point you every year. And this is our most historical building, you know, that, that's, so I think it's important to, if they want to rotate displays or keep displays, I think that's at their charge and that's why we have them.
And we always got a plan to do that.
Yes, I mean, we do that.
With the understanding that the committee, the selectmen would approve it. We never have wanted committee, the commission to be one of power, that, that the five members would act under the Massachusetts General Law, which gives us some very, some very broad powers. We never wanted that. We, we worked in conjunction. If I could mention one thing, things that come up quickly. Now, right now, there is staging up in the second floor in the classroom. It's right over five small pictures and one large picture. They are wired to the walls. We found out the first couple of times we put things up, a few disappeared. So we learned. And we, these are wired. And it was, one of the selectmen helped us do that. So had we known even, even the day that was going up, we could have come in and clipped the wires, taken those down. So right now, they're not directly under the staging, but one of the staging struts is there. That's what I mean about if we could be told in advance when something's gonna happen.
I didn't realize the staging was still there.
It's the wooden two-by-fours.
Just the two-by-fours?
Yeah.
A support two.
And our picture, they're, they're like leaning against the wall and our pictures are under them. And we haven't had access to those for over a year. So the, the requests we make, I think, are very reasonable and in many cases necessary. So I, I'll do the intro and thank you, Jen, for your promise.
I would agree that the communication, constant back and forth on this is important. And I would like to see a plan, I would recommend a plan going forward so that we discuss this on a timely basis so that you understand what's going on here and the building administrator is in the loop as well.
Do you have a statement?
Well, I must add, we did get a letter from the camera, moving the camera. We did get that.
Did you, you have emails that you said you sent?
I don't have emails.
What's back in that folder? If you could get it. I thought, I thought I had put it in this one because he did address another concern, another member's concern. So it says email at the time.
Thank you.
Oh, who did that? Oh, thank you, Robert.
You're welcome.
And I, now see, I thought of this when, he said, he, he mentioned it, the staging. And then he had, he, when he was introduced and we had a letter, we always write a letter recommending that he never be appointed, listing their interests in their talents. And his, he had a great interest in the Chester's Hill section of town because his family has a history there, has his lease. And that is on our agenda for a long-term goal. So he surprised us by, he said he was gonna do something special about it. I don't, I know some of you have seen the diorama that he did. It's, it's about this size, two panels. And it's a replication of the town of Millville in eighteen ninety-eight. Every house, every mill, every structure is on that. And it's on two big boards with the rivers and the brooks, everything. It's amazing. And he said, he was surprised. I was surprised at the last meeting when I saw all the settees in the classroom had been moved aside and long tables and chairs were all set up. Where was the Millville dior, diorama? The two pieces were standing on end of the floor. Now, I don't know any town that has, had, could, could say that they had such a piece of history as what he created. And, and to set up that room for another meeting, somebody took the two big sheets and just stood them up. Now, and his question was, is there a plan in place where someone's gonna be using a meeting room? I'd like to know who's using the room now because it's still not back in order and who is in charge of all that. Well, that sounds, that's...
That room is still off limits, right?
Yeah. That was back when, I believe, it might have been used as a classroom for the fire department? Or was it for their...
This is, no, this is, this is news to me. When we learned, when I learned that there was gonna be some type of structural issue, I did verbally speak with Ms. Carroll.
Yes, she did.
And told her that it was my suggestion that Mr. Berthellet moved the diorama to the other side of the classroom. And to my knowledge, that's what I thought happened because the next time I saw it, it had been moved. The fact that it was leaned up against the side and in a corner, that's the first I've ever heard of that.
And that was, that was, yes, Helen, right. That was when he was doing the centennial celebration. That's when he was going to introduce it to townspeople. It was a big, and Helen had suggested that it was on that side of the room that we moved it. And we did. We put it on the desk on this side. And that's where it was until we went to our last meeting and the meeting had, the meeting room had been changed. And again, we've asked in the past, but it, you know, maybe there should be something set up for the two meet, this meeting room and veterans and that select, that it should be restored to its original condition because it's months now since it's been like that. But literally, it was just taken and stood up. Even if they had found the, the desk that had been on, they could have stuck it on the desk. So I think, and whoever did it probably didn't realize the importance of it. But those of the, what we call a change, that somebody should have, should be notified of. And so then we go down that to our little list.
Well, often, you know, this is a perfect example. Oftentimes, I'm not even notified of things that are changed in this building. There are, I think, more than fifty keys to this building distributed amongst committee and board members. And people are in and out all the time. I have no control over what's done.
I feel sorry for you, Helen, because that, that's a shame, that, that.
Oh, absolutely.
That meet, that classroom, which is the closest we could come to the historical story of Millville. That can, you can't use it now for that. People can't get to the, can't get up to the, I don't know who's using it. But it's been that, it's been that way for some time.
Well, it's because of the roof.
Right.
It's a structural issue, Margaret, it's a safety issue.
That's, that's separate, we knew that. But we did, we, we, we did present up there for the centennial, but we cut the room in half with Helen's approval. We put all the settees in rows so that nobody could get into that half of the room. But that, there are, the big tables from the elevator lobby are set up. And all the chairs that there are arranged in different places. And who's ever used it, I'm sure, have the reason to put it that way. But one, you'd like to know how long are they going to be using it? And if it's, if they're finished with the program, it's going to be held once every two months or something, it should be changed. But I, I understand, Helen, what you're saying. Unless you know what's happening, you can't, you can't prevent it.
We have a form, the Town Hall Use of Building Form, much like the Veterans Park has, which should be filled out and submitted, which clearly indicates on it which room would you like to use, what's the purpose. Unless I get that form filled out, I have no idea if somebody's using it.
The person who was in charge, a contact person, that's a very good system, but something.
No, I also ask the Historical Commission to be diligent and watch these things and let us know when something's out of line or like to see something changed. But in the meantime, you know, let us know what you want to be doing going forward and the locations.
Right.
For the, you know, I think we're amenable to working with you.
Yeah, well, that's it, because we represent the town and, and you are the ones who gave us the final approval. That, that certainly is the way I want it to be. And I'm sure, I have met a member yet who didn't want it to be that way. So if that, I, do you want me to send those, those three in writing?
Please.
Give you the bottom of this one. Now, there's one email. He did mention the staging. Well, I'll, I'll send it in, I'll send it to Helen, to Roland. So it'll be, I'll be just a fresh copy of that. Any other questions?
Not necessarily for you, but I think as a collective group from this board, I think maybe we need to look at the school of the room use form or ask maybe our committees, where are they meeting? And maybe set guidelines for when they're in the building in regards to moving things or, or reporting things, like, oh, I noticed this picture fell off the wall or, you know, so that there's some accountability. But also, I'm wondering too, is if we as a group need to consider maybe meeting once and doing a walkthrough of all of our buildings? I don't know when that is done. You know, you're talking about this, you're talking about that. You know, do we take a Saturday or take two Saturdays or take an hour before a couple of meetings once a month, you know, just once a month and walk through the fire station, walk through the police station, walk through the, you know, I've got five kind of things in the library, the Mrs. Center, the fire department, the police department, senior center. And whoever has concerns for that building could be there.
Well, the energy committee's been through the senior staff. Last Friday, the chief and I went through the fire station. We've been through the library.
But I mean, we're responsible for these buildings and the space use. And we, I mean, some of the buildings I have more access than others. I respect the departments and people running them, so I don't go into certain areas. But I think that we should know, we should know the, what it looks like. We should know if there's a problem. You know, if we go into the library, you might have the library there staff who says, I'm going to come. But you might also have a person from the Historical Committee who may have pictures up there because I know that the old gaddy, I don't know if they, the gaddy. You know, so someone might from another department say, well, let's, I want to be there and I want to see the walkthrough and I want to have some input. It's just something to think about. Like I said, I don't know if it's a one, one day, one-shot thing. Or do we just do one building each month until we get them all covered? But I think there, this, things that need to be tweaked as far as room use responsibility of all of our committee members and then setting up the proper communications.
It seems like a much better spot for emails displayed. Sitting upstairs in a classroom outside is a same right to me, but I don't know if there's room in the library.
What's that?
Emails to sway. I don't know if there's room in the library for that, but seems like a more appropriate spot for it.
I would guess no. This, this room is a lot, much larger than open space.
You have to be a little careful.
Yeah, it's pretty good size and everything's glued on.
Everything's glued, there might be houses missing.
That's okay.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because, you know, they have the computers, the kids come in to use it, there's, yeah.
Well, I think as far as what you're saying, Jen, that's kind of a lot to ask the committee for every building. I think this building, because it's your priority.
It's a centipot.
This building, and probably have a liaison for all the specialty buildings and let them report to you if something's changed. That, that's asking a lot to every building. I, I, you know.
I'm not saying a one, you know, I'm saying a ton, but we should see.
But this one here.
We should see all of them, we should see. You know, I never had access to the police station for the longest time. But now I, I do. You know, I've always had access in the fire department. You know, I used to visit the chief and, the chief Malali and sit with him and talk to him. And so, you know, I, I had that rapport, but everything's still busy. You know, and our senior center, I've seen, I've been in the nooks and crannies. But I just think it's important for us to know what's going on in all of our buildings before there's a problem.
I agree.
And I'm, if, that's up to this committee if they want to do that. But it's something I think we should know what's going on.
I, I agree with you, there's, there's quite a chunk to do right now. Let's, let's focus.
It's summer, I've got all the time in my mind.
Well, that's, that's like if, if an emergency cabin comes in at the school, the best person to get a hold of is the janitor, who knows the building better.
And the next and most important person is the secretary to greet you when you come in. I have a spontaneous example of how we could have a discussion on. I'm looking at the empty chair over there. Now, we would, we would offer a plan that one, it'd be displayed in the veterans' room. Or it'd be displayed in the selectmen's room and in position where it could be seen. I don't see that saying, well, why have they got it there? It's, it's simply, it's simply a suggestion.
I, I think on, on the chair, the chairman is going to petition or request a DVT to build a pedestal for, for displaying.
That would be beautiful, yeah.
We're afraid of young children maybe climbing on it, depending on where we have it.
Well, yes, yeah.
We want it to be respectful.
Yeah, well, you know, there is such a thing as roping it off to like Arlington. Well, we thank you very much.
Chris, I think that that chair belongs in this room. Properly displayed.
Yes, I agree, I agree. And the only other place that you would consider would be the veterans' room. But then it would not be seen, I agree a hundred percent on that. Well, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Correspondence, is your packet, there's a letter from Town Spencer.
I think you skipped one job.
I skipped one.
Reverse public forum.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public forum? Public forum, anyone interested or speaker public forum?
Nope.
No, okay. Let, let's move to, look at that, Jen. Correspondence. Town Spencer. They sent a letter, it sounds very familiar to us regarding Chapter seventy, seventy-one, sixteen B and all the support to the school. And it's, they're having a tough time as well. And they're asking for our input and comments on it. The comment I have is that it seems that the central Massachusetts communities, the smaller ones, as an example, Spencer is about the equivalent size and population of Millville and Blackstone combined. We've got a few more students proportionally. We've got like fifteen hundred in the school system, they get like sixteen hundred. But they're, they're having the same issues. And, and they're questioning, you know, the way that the foundation budget are built and that kind of thing. So the only suggestion I would have there is that occasionally I get input from the Worcester County Selectmen's Association. And I know that they bring, bring the same discussion to the table at their meetings. And we might consider joining the Worcester County Selectmen's Association. Or, you know, I wouldn't mind going and attending a few of these meetings because it seems to be a lot of commonality, especially with Chapters seventy, seventy-one, and seventy-four. See if that's any help to us. I would entertain comments from, from the board.
Something has to be done. I mean, we've got to do something. You know, whether it's this or whether it's Central Mass or. I just don't think that our simple emails to our state reps and senators are doing it. No matter how many the numbers are.
These discussions came up with Dudley at one point and Charlton. It's a common theme in Worcester County, particularly in the valley. There's an appointment here.
You have a finding?
I believe we have one.
We don't have to approve that.
Town clerk, I mean, the town moderator appointed Mr. DeGale. The Capitol Planning Committee. And we'll all sit there. There's an appointment here to the Historical Commission. The letter reads.
Is she listed on our major list so we can?
Do it then. There's a, I know there are a few individuals out there probably watching this on, on TV. But there, there's an issue with the sound system and the storage of it. Again, I, I think this whole issue is basically a communication issue. You know, people need to talk to each other. The Veterans Park and the Town Hall need to get together and where, and the storage of that equipment and the like, so.
I don't have a problem if you want meeting with them.
With the Veterans Park?
With the veterans, I'll ask to attend the next meeting and see what will work. And then maybe when we go to work on the, the historical, we can, can work on this as kind of at the same time and setting that guideline and moves up. I just, I, in regards to the sound system, I can remember that was under locking key for some time and nobody had access to it because my father had the key. And so I can remember they used to really have it under locking key and they didn't let it out for anything. And then I think in time, the membership obviously of that committee had changed and the storage of that had changed. So I think it's just a matter, like you said, Joe, of setting up a new communications. I know Mrs. Bowen emailed again this afternoon to make sure that we received the email and just acknowledgement of it. So I did email her back, I saw it. But I don't have a problem. I know they meet on Friday mornings, it might very well be this Friday morning because it's usually the last, it used to be the last Friday of the month. So I could, I don't have a problem trying to work with them and move forward and get a solution for this if, if that's the pleasure of the board.
What is the pleasure of the board?
My comment to that whole thing is, whose the sound system belong to? The town?
It was purchased through funds through the veterans.
Who does the sound system belong to? The town?
They're an elected board.
Okay, so they have rights, who can use it, who can't use it?
That was always a, a their guideline.
I'm just asking, is that?
I don't know. In the past, nobody could use it.
Why? Is it for the people of, of Millville if they want?
It had to be set up and broken down by a member, I can remember that. As long as they had.
Okay, my next question is, is there a form that they, is there a form stating they would like to use it for a function in the town?
I don't know. Yes, there is a form, I believe there is a form.
Because I don't think it's right for them to refuse anybody if they fill the form out for a function in the town, because it's there for the townspeople.
No, I, I, it's a valid point.
And if there is a form and the form is filled out, they shouldn't be refused.
Yeah, the question is, who has custody of?
That's what my first question was, Joe. Does the town own, who owns it? They, Jennifer's saying it's, it's one party, elected officials that oversee it and safeguard it. Okay, with that said, is there a form, if I wanted to use it for, say, we're having that pumpkin thing outside and we want to use a speaker for the kids and this and that, how do we obtain that? How can we use it? Helen says there's a form.
Yep, you would fill out the form and that's submitted to the veterans of the park.
So there's a, there's a central name or an individual on the veterans. Who is, who is the custodian?
I don't think there's a question as to who the custodian is. It simply, clearly is the Veterans Park. However, it's stored in this building. And as you can see clearly, I did email the trustees. So I don't know why they think there's a communication issue and I clearly indicated to them that I needed to move it. I never heard back from them as to where they would like it relocated. So I'm not looking to take ownership of that or oversee that by any means. I would rather them do that, it's worked fine for years and years. The two instances that it was used without a form being filled out was primarily because Margaret Carroll was running those particular events. And having been a member of the Veterans Park and running the other two events, you know, it's unclear to me, I don't know if she filled out the form for herself to approve, I mean, I don't know. But my only involvement with that was assisting with my staff setting that up. I was not in charge of those events, it was simply helping, helping Margaret. So, you know, and if we can back up a moment, I, you know, I'm the first to admit, absolutely, we did move pictures in this building without consulting with them. As Ms. Carroll stated, they put those pictures here, nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one. I didn't start here until two thousand and six. I had no idea that was a special historic display. I've never received directive from any Board of Selectmen that I've worked with that nothing should be changed without first consulting with them. Obviously, if there was going to be a major change with the historic structure of the building, we would certainly consult with them. But just moving a picture from here to there, quite frankly, it never even entered my mind that it was going to be an issue. You know, I don't need to remind this board that we've got very little staffing. The very little bit of facilities management that we do get done is done very quickly, inexpensively. We don't have the time to really spend a great deal of time meeting with commissions, discussing, you know, where can we put this, where can we put that? We just don't have the staffing, so.
At least the people working this building should be cognizant of the fact that some of these things are historic and into question.
Hence, a yearly walkthrough of each building would clarify those points.
Well, let them decide what they want to do with it. I was just making a statement that, who owns it? They own it, they should be fully filled out.
I don't mind asking those questions to them, asking that policy in place.
Where, where is it now?
It's still in the custodial closet in the basement.
And they don't want it there?
That's the understanding I get.
And tell them to move it.
Nobody really wants it there, but we haven't been told where else to put it.
Tell, tell them to move it. Not you, tell them. Move it. You don't want it there?
Where, where's the proposed new location?
That's their decision. Because it's their equipment. And they're elected to fix, right? So let them deal with it.
Yeah, and that question also was, as far as. Yeah, and their question also was as far as use and I think responsibility of when someone has it in there here and make sure that it's... So, I think to make sure that they have a sign-off form, they make sure a check-in, a checkout, an agreement, especially if it's a town committee. If we use it from the centennial and we break the microphone, then we're probably responsible to replace that microphone. You know, if it's a drop or a break or something of that sort. Or, you know what I mean? There's got to be something, so.
So, the form goes to them?
Well, they, we don't know if there's a form.
But they need a form.
But the other thing I have to say about that whole thing is that if it's theirs and they use it, I think they should fill out a form so there's a paper chase. So, if there is some, who used it last? There's a piece of paper. Even though it is their committee, they should still fill it out like everybody else.
Yeah, I agree. But they take ownership of it.
But if they don't want it in this building, tell them, please, take it out. Put it where they feel they want to have it.
But you have to remember also that they are an elected board and if they voted as an elected board, that it's not to be used by anyone else and that's what it is. So, I, I'd rather establish...
I don't have a problem with that.
I'd rather establish a rapport so that we don't have to buy a sound system for the town when we have one in town.
Well, I think that is really ludicrous that we have to go out and buy one because they say, no, I'm sorry. That's, that's for the people of the town. I totally disagree if they came up with that.
I'm just, that's the way it was previously.
No, that doesn't mean it's right.
I, John, I'm just stating the facts, not my opinion.
Let's move on.
Do you want me to speak with them about their form use and their process and the way they're, what they're doing currently?
There's your communication. I think they would be happy.
I will attend their next meeting.
Okay, we're at the point of annual appointments for fiscal two twenty fifteen. On the, on the appointment list, the letter to cover. Helen, do we need to make a motion to create the ad hoc committee?
Correct, yes.
I'll entertain a motion to, to create an ad hoc subcommittee of Parks and Recreation Commission known as the Millville Elementary School Playground Subcommittee to be composed of one resident member of the Parks and Recreation Commission and four additional members. The five members should be appointed by the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of researching and pursuing the creation of a playground at the Millville, Millville Elementary School. And further based on the results of said research, recommended to the Board of Selectmen the best course of action for the property, for the property in town. The subcommittee shall provide a written report to the Board of Selectmen for the inclusion in the town's annual report for the years in which the subcommittee is active. So, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll.
And Mr. Chairman, generally what happens is the entire appointment list is read and if any of the members have a concern, a question, they would hold an individual and then you can vote on all the other appointments.
Okay, okay. Animal Control Officer Garrett Fagan. Assistant Animal Control Officer Leonard Ranslow. Assistant Collector Marshall Farrell. Assistant Electrical Inspector Larry Ray. Blackstone River and C- 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 Committee Margaret Carroll. Cable Access Committee Colin Curis. Margaret Carroll, Roland Barrett. Timothy Labonte, Joseph Reposa, Jesse Dufour, alternate. Centennial Celebration Committee Margaret Carroll. Jennifer Dean Wing. Keith Wing, Les Davis, Lois Salomi, Catherine Robinson. Carrie Vernon, Karen Vernon, Tina Cook, Jackie Lima, Ashley Rivera, Lauren Riley. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, alternate Roland P. Barra. Custodian of, of tax possessions Lisa LaRue. Electrical Inspector John Regna. Emergency Management Director Steve, Stephen Furno. Emergency Management Department Paul Valet. Benton Phil Phelps, Adam Bachelda, John Hadley, Flag Guardian Philip Clark. Green Energy Committee Les Davis, Jerry Finn, Joseph Layden, Joseph Reposa, Trish Benoit Rudin. Ron Landry, alternate. Memorial Day Parade Committee, one vacancy. Phil Clark, Philip Clark, Stephen Furno, Ronald Landry, Paul Valet, Gene Pooleen, Linda Basset, Lois Salomi, Lois Lefron. Municipal Center Building Committee Richard Corbello, Richard Hurtu, Helen Carfman, Jerry Finn, John Laura, Les Davis, Alvin. Park, Parks and Recreation Jeff Southern. Ronald Landry, Kevin Dogizi. Chris McNamara, Mara, Chris McNamara, Karen Vernon. Parks and Recreation MES Playground Subcommittee Karen Vernon. Karen Palumbo, Valerie Hagerty, Mary Beth Heans, Lori Cunningham. Police Department William Coop Junior, full-time sergeant. Adam Bartlett, full-time patrol officer. Lane Shepard, full-time patrol officer. Thomas Minkowitz, full-time patrol officer. Scott Gould, part-time patrol officer. Gregory Tappan, part-time patrol officer. Daniel Melhaus, part-time patrol officer. Tom Council, Brackett and Lucas. Treasure Collector Lisa LaRue.
Joe, these will be through the two thousand seventeen. The next ones you're going to read? Jared, for your terms?
Okay, three-year terms through June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Board of Assessors Karen Furno. Board of Registurers Linda Basset. Conservation Committee, Committee Peter Murray. Counsel on Aging Richard Hurtu, Judith Monroe. Cultural Council Valerie Hagerty. Historical Commission Emile Berthalet, Elaine Ethia. Zoning Board of Appeals Lincoln Barber.
There's another reason that one of the names was highlighted. Because when I put this in your packet on Thursday, I had yet to receive the receipt, but I did get that today, so it's all set.
Motion to appoint?
One, one question.
One question.
Under police, part-time chief.
He was appointed through fifteen when he had... And then there are a few others, but they grandfathered in under longer terms, so they don't expire.
Make a motion to accept the appointments as random?
Second.
Roll.
Aye. Can I also make a motion to accept Lauren Riley since we have a meeting tomorrow night and she's attending for the centennial to be effective today?
She's not here.
But will that be from this point or July first?
Oh, I see. Yep, okay.
Or does that cover it?
Nope, it's July first. You're right.
Okay.
Motion to appoint?
Lauren Riley, Centennial Committee.
Right here, second.
Effective this evening.
Roll.
Aye. Thank you.
Old business, any old business to bring up? Oh, I'm sorry.
What did you say? Helen is old business?
No, no.
Wait a minute. Very quick tonight. The Planning Board, as you know, had requested a meeting with the selectmen to discuss economic development. We had run, I think tonight was the night by them and they couldn't do tonight. They've requested actually two meetings now. They feel that it's going to require two meetings, so they're proposing July seventh and July twenty-first, which are your next two meetings. Both of these would be at six o'clock.
Seven, 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 twenty-one.
Right, and this is to discuss non-conforming uses, economic development, and a few other issues. They feel the first meeting is necessary to start the discussion and then the second meeting will be a follow-up. So, if there are no objections, I will put those on the calendar.
I will not be at the seventh.
I will not be at the twenty-first.
I don't have a problem with a meeting. I can catch up to it.
The other thing is, Mr. Kenneth Elstein, he's a specialist with the Hampshire Council of Governments, requested to speak with the board at the Monday, July seventh, meeting regarding community choice aggregation, which is an electricity program for residents. So, he will be here unless you have an objection at seven o'clock on July seventh.
What is it called?
It's the Hampshire Council of Governments and it's Community Choice Aggregation. So, I think it's a bunch of communities combining their electricity needs and purchasing in bulk. On July twenty-first, Patricia Domigan, the engineer working on the bikeway, will be here at seven o'clock to give the board an update on the status of the bikeway. And then the other, last thing I have is I did today receive back from the police union, the three signed originals of the collective bargaining, bargaining agreement. The board has already voted on these and town meeting has already approved the terms. So, I would just be looking for a motion to sign the three originals to see what happens.
So moved.
Second. Roll.
Aye.
And that's all I have.
Now, there's this.
Your right one, Rachel.
All right. New old business, new business, Kleinfelder Agreement?
Yes, if the board recalls, Kleinfelder was the chosen architectural and engineering firm to do the existing condition study. They have signed the town's standard contract and it would just now require a signature by the board. It only requires one signature. So, your motion would be to authorize the vice chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Motion of the vice chair to sign.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
And just for the board's information, I did hear back from Kleinfelder and they're proposing to come out with their crew either next Monday, the thirtieth, or later that week, so I will keep you posted once that happens. As you know, this time of year, we have many shortages in some line items. Within budgets, we can stay within expenses and salaries, but oftentimes a department has to borrow from an expense or a salary and move things around a little bit. So, I've got several end-of-year budget reserve forms here for your approval. Once you, if you authorize these tonight, we'll then go to the Finance Committee Wednesday evening. The first is from Insurance Medical to Treasure Collector, Assistant Collector and Treasure Collector Clerical. These are for part-time and temporary employees. The total is fifteen hundred dollars. I have from Insurance Medical to Town Hall Repairs and Maintenance, Town Hall Maintenance Agreements and Town Hall Telephone. These are for various vendors such as dehumidifiers, air purifiers, and line item overages. The total is three thousand dollars on that. From Highway Storm Water to Highway Streetlights, four national grid overage, two thousand dollars. From Selectmen Expenses to Town Clerk Record Preservation, this is for the purchase of a large, extra-large map-sized scanner. The town clerk would like to start scanning in all of the maps for preservation reasons and we're just a little bit short in her line items, so that's for six hundred dollars, which includes a great deal of supplies which should last for...
Can we create electronic files that might be accessed, accessed through the web as well?
I'm not sure about accessing through the web. Right now, the, the thought process is to scan them onto a drive, a flash drive. And if anybody wants to come in, they could sit in the town clerk's office, put the drive in and look at what they want to look at. But we are trying to look ahead and do things electronically now. So, at first, we were going to get an extra-size laminator and laminate them all to preserve them, but it makes much more sense to scan and have them electronically. And she does have that additional funding in her preservation because the general code project, which just ended, was under capital. This will likely be the last year that that money will be available because now going forward, the upkeep of the bylaws will come out of that line item, so. From Assessors Department Tuition and Training to Assessors Department Clerical, this is for the part-time employee overage due to extra work required for the position, two hundred fifty dollars. From Executive Secretary Expenses to Executive Secretary Clerical Part-Time Employee Overage Due to Extra Work Required for the Position, four hundred dollars. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
The only question I have on those things, I'm sorry, Chairwoman. Do you have the breakdown there in case the Finance Committee wants to know?
Yes, yep, everything's broken down right on the forums.
What was the amount?
Two thousand. Motion to approve the transfers?
So moved.
Second. Roll.
Aye.
I was asking for the motion. Do we have one more meeting across the transfer if we need it?
Yes, yeah, July seventh will be the last meeting. The books will be closed probably the second week in July, so.
Name the forum. Do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Baker?
Good.
Mr. Laura?
I'm all set, sir.
Final public forum. Pat?
No, I'd just like to congratulate the city's citizens for receiving the interview today.
Yep, good.
Which rate, it's wonderful addition.
One, one quick clarification to move, to use the assessors overlay as part of the...
Question. Please, up on the mics. He should be coming up there too.
I was going to, but I was too short.
This is money, this is money. Sorry, Rich.
Can I sing? Regarding the assessors overlay and using that, does that require a two-thirds vote at the town meeting?
I'll check with council on that. I honestly...
I thought it was. Okay, I have gotten a couple of questions about that. And I'm not sure myself, to be honest with you. The other, everything else we did was within the budget, so that's... So, I'm not sure if we need a separate vote for that and then vote on everything or how that would work.
Okay, I'll check with council. I was actually drafting the motion today, so I will run that by him.
Now, can I sing?
Thank you.
Rich, do I have a question?
Yep.
Was that recorded up? I personally was concerned about the road repair.
Uh-huh.
Twenty thousand. Is it, was there any other place?
The only way we could have done it in leaving that would be to probably, we'll only slice all the other accounts to come up with that amount of money. And at the time, it looked like it was a bridge too far to do that without bringing in all the other departments to, for that. We brought him back to be level funded, I believe, what he had last year. We didn't cut him back. We just brought it back to be, to be level on it. He definitely needs it, there's no doubt about it. I mean, you just drive around, you can see.
I think that might have increased by three thousand. I think he was at twenty-seven and he left it at thirty, so he might have a little, little...
Okay.
Couple of problems.
One frame and cover, get on that.
I, I spoke to him this, this morning and he's in the process of writing up the roadwork to Lincoln Street and the Plainsville Street.
Okay.
And he said it's going to happen this season.
A lot of towns, I, I noticed, do that as part of the Capitol planning. They put roads in there. I don't know if that's something we need to do to work with the highway severity so we've got a cohesive plan or what, but that's something we can think about, but...
Just call it a Capitol Preservation Plan.
Okay.
Capitol Stabilization.
Certain in that, and I've seen some other towns that, that do that, so.
Our, uh, next regular scheduled meeting will be Monday, July seventh, twenty fourteen. We will do signatures and then adjourn, uh, the meeting.
Um, I have a request from my young mother.
Here's your first stack, Joe. Oh, this gets signed by, this one gets signed by you, Joe.
I had a name and this problem, a, a, because I would ask what that is. I'll ask. I'll ask where. Yeah.
Jesus, I'm gonna pick it up.
She told me last week, she told me last week and I was walking out and she goes, uh, don't forget about cleaning the playground. I'm like, I don't clean. She said, you know, the driving on the playground. So. It's what my nephew. I, I think that was underneath that. I think that's on there. This came up to me last week. My brother did not see that.
Joe, this gets signed by you, all right?
We won.
Did I miss that? Men's decide? We have, we have one.
Yeah, you just.
That's it, I did, okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll.
Aye.
Aye. Seven fifteen, eight fifteen.